I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Dre, would you please call the roll?
Abbott.
Here.
Beth.
Here.
Fuller.
Present.
Hands.
Here.
Towers.
And Beth, would you please read the procedure for remote access? We added one sentence to that.
Yep. Remote access to select board meetings, while not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Business is conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees, in person or remote, who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for public attendee participation are: One, remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Two, intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. Three, people will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to presence of remote questions or comments. Four, remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Five, comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. This time limit will apply to in-person participants as well. Six, general ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting.
Thank you, Beth. And who do we have participating?
Let me just let one more person in. Okay. We have Doug White, Lauren Dever, Bill Richardson, Jen Brace, Terry Parker, Chris Hardaway, Annette Smith, and a phone number. And then I just have some initials and I'll try to get the name of the person through the message here.
So we had a few last minute items come in to be placed on the agenda. Those are in bold italics. I don't know what we want to do about the treasurer's report. She was going to offer her services for dump day and those dates that I put on there now are not available to her. So do we want to just strike the treasurer's report?
What is she?
She was gonna, she had two dates for possible dump day, but she has conflicts on those dates and she said she has nothing in May or June. And she's given us the other information as she always does. So should we just strike the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Okay. We have a Green Mountain power permit that they're asking approval to do undergrounds power on Easy Street. And there's a discussion, I guess, to be had about some guard rail work. And two more fleet permits came in, so nothing very major. I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I'll make the motion. We set the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of the agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried unanimously. Is there public comment?
None from here.
Brad, am I on your agenda? I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, there being no public comment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the select board meeting of March 9th, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is Dan Garsot. He has two items to report to us. The first is guidelines for plaques on the veterans' memorial.
Oh, I'd like to read off what we've suggested.
Sure.
We talked about.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful so that people...
And this was our first go around, but it's understood that Dambie and Mount Tabor Veterans Memorial honors all veterans from all ranges of the military. And the second one, after lots of discussion, we decided we could alter this somehow, but it's understood that only residents, and we had written "and/or registered voters of Dambie and Mount Tabor" can nominate a veteran to be honored with a plaque. So we had talked a little bit and, and, I don't know, we felt that it just opened it up. And how do we verify if we just put "open to all Dambie residents" and then what's, is there a check?
Dambie and Mount Tabor.
Dambie and Mount Tabor. Yeah, we're gonna put that in there too. Yeah.
Well, I think a check would be whether or not they receive a tax bill.
Okay. And then, like, the procedure would be if someone came to one of us and we would just call and say, okay, this is the person, this is the address, and then just get it verified?
Just look at the grand list and there they are.
Okay. So I can rewrite that when we formally submit?
Yeah. We had had a discussion about registered voters. Not everybody chooses to be a registered voter, and I don't think that should preclude them.
Right. And, and I think with the beginning, we, we had just put it in as like a check system, but yeah, it makes more sense just to check with the grand list.
Well, I guess my only concern on that is not everybody's a property owner who's a veteran. And they may be rent, they may be tenants or, or their parents or something own, you know, they live here, but they don't actually appear on the grand list.
Well, yeah, and...
I mean, that's up, that's up to yours.
No, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not missing anybody that...
Right.
You know, to say that you're a veteran and just because you don't own your property in town, but you've lived here 10 years.
Well, this, this is to nominate, like, if somebody doesn't have to be a veteran to nominate to purchase a six by six. So if somebody, let's say I wanted to...
Okay, so you're saying it doesn't have to, it's just a person to nominate?
It's just a Dambie resident, if they want to honor a veteran, then they would, they can put an order in to order the six by six.
Like, if I wanted to nominate my uncle, but I'm not on the grand list.
Well, there we go.
Right, but I'm not on the grand list.
That is a perfect example. If she wants to nominate, she should be able to. I consider her a resident.
I am a resident, but you would probably be on the grand list.
She could, right, but she could prove residency by showing an electric bill or a driver's license.
Well, so what I'm saying is I didn't want to do it just off the grand list.
Right, and it doesn't, it just says residence.
So can we just strike that red, the registered voter out of it?
Yeah, take that out and I'll rewrite, we'll have David rewrite this. Just change it up a little.
Thank you, Dre. You were a perfect example.
And then it's also understood that the nominated honorary does not have to be a resident of Dambie or Mount Tabor. Any veteran, no matter, their residency can be nominated. So any person can nominate anybody in their family, a friend, or whatever. And after we talked about it, we thought, well, the more the merrier, the more plaques we get up there, maybe more people come, you know...
No, and you're right.
And be involved, like...
And they, they have a tie to Dambie at that point.
Right, exactly. So, so it's, that's a all good thing. Each bronze plaque is six by six, oh, I should have brought the one we just had named, inches, as you've seen out there. Each bronze plaque will be tastefully and respectfully placed in the veterans' memorial. Proof of honorable discharge from the U.S. Military. DV214 report or other official forms required to be honored in the veterans' memorial. Payment for the memorial plaque, which we might have to change that. I just got the bill for the one we just did that's going up for Memorial Day. And it, there was been a little, so it'll be approximately 175 for a plaque and not 160, which we will alter this here. And any disputes or confusions will be heard and settled by the veterans' memorial. David, Commissioner, currently Dan Garsot.
Wonderful.
Quick question on that. How much room is on the plaque?
How much room?
Yeah, for six by six.
We got, we got enough room there for a thousand.
No, 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 on the plaque for the information?
No, on, on the monument itself, how much room is there to put six by six plaques on?
We, we've got room for about 15 more on that panel. But then I suggested, I believe, at the last meeting, that we, we, the interior walls of the marble, we can put three, four rows of them all around the inside.
Okay, that would be quite a cool looking area.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
And if you run out of space, go around the back. There's a big wall on the back. But I don't think we're gonna get that far, but I think if we mounted them in a nice orderly fashion on the marble, that'd be pretty cool.
Any other comments or suggestions? So it sounds like if you just make those two changes, striking registered voters and correcting the current price, we're good.
Okay, we'll get it done and then just send you a copy, send it to you.
And to the town clerk.
To the town clerk, yeah, James, okay.
File here. Next, Dan, you have the contract for Northshire Rescue.
Right, you've received a copy of that? I, I personally don't have a problem with it, as it's written.
Let's see the, what we're actually going to be signing. And you're our rep still, Dan?
Yes.
And how often do you meet with...
They don't, they don't meet that often. I, I think it was supposed to be three times a year. Meet when necessary.
Well, I guess I've got a concern that was brought to me on this. And it was the, them responding on a day that the weather was inclement, inclement, and that they had told the people that they couldn't get there for three hours because the roads weren't good. And I guess my concern with that, that I wanted you to relay in these meetings, is that I think we pay pretty much the same per person for us. And I wouldn't be aware that they would do that to one of the residents of Manchester or some of the areas. And it was concerning to hear that.
When, when did that play, take place? Do you know?
A few months back, a few months back.
A few months back?
This, this past week.
This is the first I hear of it. And we, I went to the meeting with what, two and a half weeks ago?
Yes.
Two and a half weeks ago, to go over this.
Yeah, no, it was just brought to my attention a few weeks ago. And I did want to bring, I was hoping that someone from Manchester Rescue would come when we were doing this, not just our representative. Because that is concerning that if they're, I mean, you know, maybe they could answer why they are saying that, you know?
So they said a bad, on a bad weather day, that it was gonna take them three hours to get to Dambie?
To get to Dambie.
When's the last time, Ken, you heard anything like that? I mean, Ken, Ken would know better than anyone.
I don't, I couldn't say yes or no in that appointment. We try to get them in whenever we can. But, I mean, if it's, that... Something like that shouldn't happen.
Right.
And if it did happen, it needs to be addressed.
Would you like one, one of them to attend the next meeting? I mean, they, they want, they want the contract signed before July 1st.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and, and like Ken said, I, I think there should be some looking into it. Because I, I think that resident felt that they weren't served as, as needed.
Absolutely. I will look into it.
And it's concerning.
Yeah.
I mean, because Dambie stood behind Manchester Rescue 100% when Manchester was getting ready to dump them. So, I guess it is...
And I don't think the problem was on our end with the roads.
No, I don't think it's ever an issue that, I mean, roads are gonna be slippery in the winter. I mean, I would hope if I called the fire department that Kenny would have chains on his trucks.
We're gonna get there. I don't know if we're getting out of there, but we're getting in there.
Yeah.
We know all about that one.
We know how to get them in.
We get them in.
Reason why I, I brought that as Ken, because I too was on the fire department for a good number of years. And when, when we called, when we called Manchester Rescue, I mean, they came. They came. There was never a question whether they were gonna come or not.
So do you, do we know whether that comment was made from Northshire Rescue Squad or from the 911 call or?
Yeah, see, I didn't ask that part of it.
So that, this took place about two months ago.
Yeah.
And it was a Dambie resident. I'll look into it.
And I don't mind, I, I mean, I guess I don't want to compromise anybody's, you know, confidentiality of medical issues. But I, you know, I, I think we could be more specific with dates if...
Yeah.
It was very concerning to me.
As, as it should be. And I, you know, I had, I had my mother living with us for seven years. And when, when we called an ambulance, we, we needed it, needed it now, not the hour.
Yeah, and that thing is, I've never heard that in my life.
You have to wait.
That's absurd. No, I will look into that. Other than that, I mean, I, I don't have any problem with the contract. That's the first I hear of any complaint.
So do I hear a motion to sign the contract, or do you want to wait pending investigation of this incident?
I mean, they don't need it till July, right? You said?
They want it by July 1st.
I mean, I guess I'd like to hear more what kind of services we're paying for.
Yeah. All right. I'll give it back to you.
I mean, we can sign it.
Would you like, Dan, to bring the rep here from there?
I think that would be, I guess my only concern is how much we want, you know, it would, in executive session, if we have to get into specifics.
Right. I don't want to do specifics over TV, but it would be nice if, Dan, you could get somebody to come here from there so that they can answer questions personally.
Like at the next meeting?
Next meeting?
Guest, please.
All right. I'll request that. And I guess if, it's a request. If they don't come, they're, they got a problem. Oh, yeah, okay. Do that.
Okay, that will be on the main agenda. So, Dan, thank you for all of your volunteer efforts.
Mostly her.
You're such a good assistant.
No, he's only saying that so if something goes wrong, he says, what, what, what?
Okay, then next we have our planning commission report. Ladies?
Yes. So the planning commission had been working on the renewal process for the Dambie Village designation, and that was approved. So Dambie has the Village Center designation for another eight years and has all the benefits that carry with that. And then the planning commission, we will be meeting in May and then taking a break for the summer and resume meeting in September. And then Michelle had a few notes from Rutland Regional.
So last month I attended the meeting and I learned about the program MERC, Municipal Energy Resilience Program. And I think you guys are aware of it. So the state has set aside $450 million. It is a grant program, but there's no money matching. The first thing you do is apply for an energy audit, which will be free. I've realized we just did all of this updating and now they want to give us money for that. Maybe the garage could do something that's, you know, you guys should talk about it. My opinion is that it would be foolish, since we're paying for it anyway, to not take something back. They did towns in our region by most energy efficient to lease, and we were like dead center. So they're gonna give the money out based on your need, so we have a 50/50 shot. And I think it's worth looking into.
How did they assess the towns?
It was weird. They didn't, they did not explain that very well.
Because it sounds like they were going to do an energy audit for buildings.
Right.
No, it was by residents, household income. And I think the grand list, it was really weird. They did not explain it well. I apologize. I don't know, but we landed dead center. So we're 50/50. And whether we take the money or not, we all know we're paying for it.
So I can say, I'm confused on what money you're... I mean, we're asking for money, it's municipal for our residential units or that we don't...
No, our municipal buildings. So all we had is this building and that building.
But back to Brad's thing, and I don't want to...
Oh, how did they get their numbers?
How did they get their numbers when, if we're, so we're dead in the money in the middle as far as, they didn't use an energy audit like Brad. They used a...
Financial numbers.
Yeah, that they pull from the federal government, like when we do bonding and stuff.
Yeah. And it wasn't explained well, and I didn't understand it well. My apologies for that, but we're dead center. So the first step would be to put in an application for an audit. You'd have to decide which of the two buildings, because you can only do one. I think...
They're a year behind on pretty much everything. We got new garage doors, new...
I know. Well, that's what I said.
This building is 100%. Ken, is it, is it retroactive?
It is not.
Okay. I mean, because that would actually be...
Right.
Yeah.
But if they came in and did the garage and found that we could do this or this just to tidy it up even more, who's it gonna hurt?
Insulation.
Yeah, we need a roof more than insulation.
We need a roof more than insulation.
Well, an insulated roof.
I mean, I don't think...
Yeah.
I don't think sending the application for the audit is gonna hurt anybody.
And that doesn't cost us anything.
Nothing. And that was the part about, do you know how I feel about grant programs? Because lots of times it's like, we'll give you this, but you have to do this, this, and this. This one, we don't have to do anything. We don't have to match any money. We don't, nothing.
And the applications are...
As soon as possible.
Yeah, but where, that's, this is, Rutland Regional has them on their website?
Yes, I can have one sent to Brad maybe, or whoever wants to be that person.
And when are they due?
There is no deadline yet, but sooner than later. Projects would have to be finished by 2028, so it's the very beginning.
And would that, did that include like solar panels?
It could, it could. It's based, it's anything to update.
That whole garage roof is spacing itself free.
The whole front side.
Get quite that much, but we'd, if they'd pay for it, whatever we got out of it. And it's MERC?
MERC.
That's the fire or noise pulling we talked about a little bit last meeting.
Oh, I guess I didn't see that.
We talked about it.
Yeah, we talked about it. She had sent some emails, but we felt...
Right. Oh, it's the same one rehab.
Okay. For that, Michelle.
You're welcome.
And then we'll move on to our delinquent tax collectors' report.
Okay, so I emailed the whole board on Tuesday, just to give you a quick head drop this to the three items I was gonna be bringing in front of you guys, Ty. The first one is our current amount that we've still got out, delinquent. The second one is an errors and omissions property, the, the tax bill actually got printed by mistake on. And the third one is a list of the next tax bill properties that I'd like to get approval. So the current amount of, of delinquent taxes that's still outstanding has changed since I sent this email. Actually, we're down to 43,000 even as to what's outstanding at this point, real time. And that's, that's all.
Forty, forty-three even?
Forty-three.
So down from 51 to 43.
Forty-three, but it's rounded to 43. And that's for all years. That's, that's everything that's out there delinquent right now.
So were any of these that you listed paid?
One of them started making payments and one did pay off. So when I get down there, I'll, I'll say, I'll let you know which ones they were.
Okay.
So yeah, that's where we're at. Delinquent wise, I don't know if anybody has any questions. I've been emailing you guys the reports monthly, and you can probably, you can see how much they've been coming down month to month. Next thing was the errors and omissions property. The McPherson property on Parish Hill sold a couple of years ago. And when it sold and the transfer took place, there was a piece of land, I believe, across the road that didn't transfer like it should because the whole property sold. Back in '21, I actually called Ruth on it when I saw that it had hit the delinquent list. And the listers realized that they hadn't, you know, combined that with the whole property when it sold. So it did produce a new bill. And Ruth's like, we didn't keep any of it, everything left. So they fixed it. We thought everything was good and it didn't carry over for the 2022 tax year. And again, it produced a tax bill for that same property. If you look it up in the system, it's showing as inactive. So why it printed a bill, I have no idea. But I reversed up the penalty on it because it did hit delinquency. Being an inactive property, I think the board can just go ahead and say, approve you on ahead and reversing that $25 worth of interest to clean this up and get it right to the books. You know, they should have never produced that bill in the first place. It's not even a piece of land, really. I mean, it's, it is land, but it's all owned by the major master property. So what I asked of you guys is just to make a motion to approve me to go ahead and reverse that $25 entry.
I'll make the motion. It does reverses the fee.
I'll second that. Okay, motion is made and seconded. So for discussion, it sounds, do you know for a fact that we signed the, I forget the number of the form, that...
The errors and omissions form.
For...
I mentioned it the morning back when I first discovered, just to make sure that gets on that form, that this, this hits the errors and omissions form.
Because that's what we need to sign.
But even signing that, the interest is still gonna sit there until somebody reverses that back out. So if you want to wait, I don't, I don't care.
Well, I think we can vote on the motion now and get it that clear and then just have her print out that form that we can sign it.
When does that form come to you guys? It should be anytime now.
It's just a standard form. It's in the computer and... Um, it's just a standard form. It's in the computer and she presses print and we sign it.
So it's now like a once a year and all the properties that are in errors and omissions are on the one form? Oh, okay.
They have to fill it in.
I thought it was. I thought it was like a once a year thing and, you know, after they had the grant list, I'll figure anything that was, I thought they sent to you in, in one form. And all the properties are on the same form.
Back when I was a listener, we had to fill it in. Now maybe something has changed in the system. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I've never done any of the listener work. I just, it seems like to me that's how they have been doing it recently.
So are we ready to vote on the question?
Yeah.
All those in favor of, um, approving the motion to reverse the $25 interest on the parcel, please say aye.
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 And the opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the third thing was the, the next run of tax sale properties that what I'm looking for tonight, I'm not looking for anything other than just for you guys to approve this list of properties. Just to approve that I go ahead and take this to the next level and get these headed toward a tax sale.
Would we have five here or four?
Um, there's actually, I started out with eight. There was eight of them when I emailed you Tuesday. It's a Breton property. It's a piece of land only. It's 35 acres. Cabusta, they paid in full. They're, they're off. Kelly, they started making payments, so they're, they're off. There's a Reed unlanded mobile home. There's a Phillips mobile home with 3.8 acres of land. There's the Tiff house and that has 12.25 acres of land with the house. There's P Core, which is an unlanded mobile home. And there's Bushy, which is another unlanded mobile home. Now there's, there's six properties now that I'd like to, um, take to the next, next step. And like I said, I'm not asking for anything other than just approval to go ahead and take these to the next level. I'll come back in a later meeting when we find out what the actual sale date is going to be. And this gives you guys time to look at these and decide instead of spur of the moment, if the town wishes to bid on any of these, if there isn't any bidders. I think it's a better way of doing it. It gives you more time to, to look at these properties and really know what they are.
So you're not looking for anything right at this moment?
Just approval to go ahead and take them six properties to the next step and turn them over to Kevin O'Toole. Then what he'll do is he'll send a demand letter. He gives 30 days and if they don't pay it within that 30 days, then he'll come in, do title searches and set the date for sale.
I'll make the motion that we let Doug go through the next step.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your good work. So next on the agenda, we have opening bids for the property at 709 Green Hill Road. Did you see the, uh, response to that? So we have received three bids. To the town of Danby, Michael and Denise Taylor hereby bid $18,520 for property located at 790 Green Hill Road in Paulette and closed as a certified cashier's check in the amount.
So you said 18,120?
520.
What was the amount?
Eighteen thousand, 520. Shirley Roberts, who, um, has owned the property and lost it to tax sale, has put in a bid for $15,000 with a certified check. That's 15,000 even. And Mark McClellan has put in a bid for $20,001. Two zero comma zero zero one. So it sounds like Mark McClellan, it looks like Mark McClellan is the high bidder for 20,000, $1.
I make a motion that we, um, award the bid to Mark McClellan for the 20,001 dollar bid.
I will second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to bring one point to you guys that I'm not sure if everyone really understands or not. But with any of the bids, anything over the $8,000 that's owed to the town?
Goes to the owner.
Property owner.
Yep.
So you guys don't make any more than 8,000, no matter who you choose.
The only thing is, and we actually had checked on something, Doug, is the way we put that out is we have no option except for going with the high bid.
Well, you guys, you guys couldn't take a low bid or anything like that. So you, so you're obligated to take in the high.
The way it was stated in our advertisement, we actually had the lawyer.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that the town could only keep what they had.
Right.
For expenses.
And we have 60 days to reconcile all of the expenses that were incurred.
Okay. This one, that's all I wanted to do is make sure that everybody understood that.
But we had, we had questioned that today.
Okay.
And so we asked for an opinion on it and, um, the way it was stated is for qualified bidder was, um, to present a bank cashier's check and for the full amount of the bid and un-retractable. So with that being the only qualification, the only qualification for the bidder is, is that, I mean, I, I guess we could have written it differently and put in that we had the right to reject any bids and all, I mean, or went with that, but in this case it was actually written as.
But when I, when I read, you guys had it posted somewhere. I thought that I did read that you guys had the right to, to reject any bid. Well, I guess where I read that one, I read it on the post office notice. But, um, maybe not. I might, might have been dreaming. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just going with what Jim Arlo had told us because I had asked the same question as you did just now.
Yeah.
Earlier today and I said, well, you know, do we have an option here to?
Yeah.
And, and we really don't have an option unless we had, at least with his opinion, that was it.
Right.
The way it was.
You, you, you guys call. I just, like I said, it's your call.
Not a good call.
Was it put out there to the highest bidder? Is that how it was?
We have the.
Is it written as?
The advertisement said, notice of real property sale. Notice is hereby given that the town of Danby, Vermont will accept sealed bids on the following parcel of land and mobile home acquired at the town at tax sale. And it was the address and the acreage and the parcel ID number, and it says minimum bid $8,000. Persons interested in purchasing this property must submit a sealed bid, which must be received in hand at the Danby Town Office, 130 Brook Road, Danby, Vermont, 5739, by 3:00 PM on April 12th, 2023. Bids must clearly state the bidder's name, address, telephone number and the amount the bidder is willing to pay. Each bid must be accompanied by a bank cashier's check in the full bid amount payable to the town of Danby. The bid and check must be in a sealed envelope labeled 790 Green Hill Road. Checks from unsuccessful bidders will be returned promptly. All bids must be unconditional. If a bid is accepted, it cannot be withdrawn. In the event of tie bids, the successful bidder will be drawn randomly from the highest tied bidders. The bids will be opened in public on April 13th, 2023, 7:00 PM, Danby Select Board Meeting. The town proposes to convey the property to the highest qualified bidder, subject to municipal compliance, with public notice requirements and authorization provided under 24 VSA subsection 1061A. The property will be conveyed by quick claim deed on an as-is-where-is basis with no warranty covenants to the successful bidder. No express or implied warranties regarding the property's condition or mobile home. The mobile home is occupied and will be conveyed as occupied. The successful bidder will be solely responsible for persons occupying the property. The sale is unconditional. Perspective bidders should do their due diligence before bidding. The property is not available for inspection prior to bidding. The town will deliver the deed at closing within 60 days from the bid opening at, bid opening date at the Danby Town Office. The town reserves the right to reject any and all bids. Questions should be directed to Bradley Bender with my address. That's how the notice read.
So there was a clause in the bottom where you guys can reject any and all bids. I thought that I had read that. Okay. Just so that I'm not crazy.
I guess. I mean, we haven't voted on it, right? Did we vote on it?
No, we didn't. There was a motion made and it was seconded.
Okay.
And let's put in the discussion.
Okay, so is there any other discussion?
I'm versed in it. If she's owned it very long and can pay it off, I'd rather see it go back to the original owner.
I agree with Steve after listening to it more and thinking about it.
Yeah, I.
I agree with you.
It's not going to benefit us one way or the other, and I think owning her own home would benefit her more than having the $12,000 in her pocket. That's my opinion. I mean, she's willing to pay 15,000 for her own home.
Yeah, I don't want to kick somebody out if they're willing to catch up on what they owe. The last sentence pretty much gives us our right to pick.
Yeah.
Anything.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the lawyer says effectively, the only stated qualification for being a qualified bidder was presenting a bank cashier's check in full amount of the bid, not less than 8,000. Had there been other specific bidder criteria in the request for bids and one or more of those criteria was not met, then likely yes, the select board could reject the bid as unqualified.
But she gave us a bank check, correct?
Mm-hmm. Then she's a qualified bidder.
She's a qualified bidder.
And we, according to this, we have the right to refuse any bid.
Any and all.
So if Tom wants to rescind his motion, I'll make the motion that we sell the property back to Shirley Roberts.
I'll rescind my motion.
Rescind my second.
Okay. All those in favor of rescinding the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll entertain a new motion?
I'll make the motion that we sell the property back to Shirley Roberts.
I will second that.
And let's put the amount of, uh, her check in there.
$15,000 was the amount of her check, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Is there a second?
He seconded it.
He seconded it. Okay. Any other discussion?
So I guess, I guess my only, you know, I, in, in this prob- this is the third time.
For Shirley?
Yeah.
Third time that I remember.
Yeah, and I've been involved in all three of them, I think, and it's.
You, you gotta do them every year and she usually always redeems. And this time she thought that she applied for one of the state, you know, CARE Act grants and thought that it had been paid to that. I don't know why she didn't check up closer on it and make sure, you know, before the redemption date, but that's just what happened.
Right.
That's what happened.
Now, and it, it's, it's, you, you hate getting to this point, but we all spend a lot of time that isn't reimbursed dealing with her for three times now. And I mean, I, I, I don't want to kick anybody out of their home, but I really wish people would.
She always redeems, so it's not like you guys put any time into those last, last couple.
Well, if I spend three hours or four hours discussing this and dealing with it, which I do and we don't get paid to, um, we're putting time into it.
Yeah, I've definitely.
So I, I mean.
Put several hours.
I would rather not have to deal with any tax sales, um, because.
The last couple of times when she redeemed, you were dealing with people calling you and talking to you for two and three hours at a time? I don't think so. The tax sale happened, she redeemed. I don't think you guys even heard a word about it.
No, we're saying.
This time you got some time involved, yes. Yeah, you do. You got time involved and you do.
We have time.
But you know, you're only going to get to keep $8,000 of it no matter who you sell to.
Right.
And I'm glad that you guys had, at least of all, didn't vote the first time around and, and let me get my point and say, okay, you know, just let's step back and think about this for a minute. I mean, you're going to be kicking a person off that's living there.
Right. And that isn't the intent of anything, but, you know, the thing is, do you, you like having to deal with people not paying their taxes all the time?
It's what I do.
I mean.
That's what I do. It's my job.
I, 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 I scrape every year to make sure all of ours are paid and it's, it's not like any of everybody.
We all do. We all do.
So, and.
It's just, it's what I do for the town and these situations come up and they're, they're always gonna. Perfect world, everybody would pay every year and there'd never be delinquency. That's not going to happen.
All right.
Ready to call a question?
I'm ready.
Okay. Andrea, would you poll the board, please?
Abbott?
Uh, yep.
Fuller?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Okay, the other checks will be returned.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Doug.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Green Mountain Power permits.
Actually, it's not a permit, but.
Do they call it a permit?
Guess I would like to see it ahead of time.
Where does that line currently go?
It comes in from Hughes. I guess I'd like to table that until we've got time to look at it. I didn't know that he got it in already. I, I met with him and we went over everything, but I asked him to submit it and I don't know how many days it's been sitting here, but.
Well, it's dated, it's the 7th, so, uh, it was received on the 10th.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion to table?
Yeah.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's no discussion on it.
Did you look at it at all, Steve?
I didn't know we had it.
I didn't either. That's.
Um, there's no discussion on a motion to table, so motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of tabling say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tabled. Road Commissioners Report. It does look like we have to.
Which one is that? Our financial plan? Yeah. I mean, we can sign our financial plan, but that's not really a discussion, is it?
I must show all of it to me.
No, I think we'll just talk about. Um, we got a few things going on. I guess we'll deal with, um, projects first. Parish Hill is, the tree cutting is pretty well complete. How much do we got left on that?
If everything holds together, three days.
Yep. Um, our grading, Larry's gotten around every road once, has he, or?
Not every road once. He's gotten high-volume roads once. You'll be able to get back at it probably Wednesday or Thursday of next week because we're expecting rain.
Right.
So we're gonna have to wait on that, and.
Our Lily Hill Bridge project, um, at the pre-bid, we had no, the, the, um, required pre-bid, no one showed up for. So we've gone a direction of speaking to another contractor. We've made contact with him once, and, um, we're gonna try to work with a town in hand to, and that's the Lily Hill Bridge project. I don't know if we have an actual number on that bridge, but it's something down there. It's one at, down closest to one thirty-three.
That's the most bottom one?
Yeah, the one in the S terms.
We were gonna try and get some piece of property and re-align the road, but.
Um, we've sent out our paving bids for, um, the Parish Hill Project, and we've, the, um, Brook Road Project in Lily Hill. There's three roads on there. Um, I, so they'll be open for the next meeting. We are, I guess we can go on to the truck discussion now. We have, or actually, we've got guardrails.
We've got guardrails.
Um, we're gonna guardrail some of Parish Hill. I don't know if anyone's been up through there since it's been. And it looks nice and wide, but it does drop off on that one side. And so we have that section, um, that we're probably gonna do. And we have a couple others because we can barely fit that one section into our, our thing, our, our guardrail money. And I think that's it for projects, other than we can go on to discuss in the, um, we wanna do the on-call position next, maybe, or do we wanna, in case the truck takes a while? Sure. Um, we're gonna have an on-call position for, um, or we're, I guess we're, I'm bringing it to the board for an on-call position, um, for that fourth man in a real pinch when we have a bad storm, or if other guys aren't available at the time. Um, you know, callouts on weekends if we can't get some of the guys, because right now there's no requirement for these guys to be sitting at home waiting for the phone call when a windstorm comes through and knocks a tree down. And so we've had an application from, where's our applications? From Elijah Haynes, um, and he's got more than ample experience to be an on-call. I don't know if you've looked at the application.
No, I've not seen it.
Ken, did you?
I have not looked at it.
Have we checked with, um, the union?
We did not ask the union yet on that, but I guess we're not to the point other until the board actually.
Yeah, I think we need to do two things. Check with the union, and I think we need to advertise the position.
Yep. Um, I guess that one we, we can hold then for the time being, but I guess we're at the point, though, we're asking for if the board wants to. And I don't know if we have any real set amount of hours. I mean, what would we be thinking? Maybe forty hours in a year? Would it be?
I mean, it, it would depend in the winter time because, like, when I was with the fire department on that structure fire, I was tied up three hours, Ken.
Oh, at least three hours.
You know, and it would have been nice if we could have had somebody actually get in the dodge and at least babysit the village while the other two trucks were out, because once I got past the fire, that was it. I could open the road up above them, but then I was blocked in.
I guess what we need to do is, we need to set a number of hours that we're willing to.
At an hourly rate?
At an hourly rate. And if we go, and then I guess we've just gotta run it by the union to see what. But I, I, our question is, do, does the board wanna?
Oh, I think it's a good idea. I mean, even if you get somebody sick.
Right.
Or you end up with two guys sick.
Well, that's the thing is.
Or somebody gets hurt.
There's still, there's still municipalities that can't fully fund, you know? So for us to have a call-in extra is, is a great thing. Um, I do agree with Brad that we probably should extend the advertisement for another, um.
Can be two weeks or something.
For another couple of weeks.
And I also think that we should set up an hourly rate, but not an hourly amount per year. Because that could come back and bite us. If you have somebody out long-term, say you, say somebody gets hurt and they're out of work for a month, um, that person could cover for them.
Right.
And then you'd eat up that forty hours in a, in a hurry.
Yeah. No, I did that in the eighties a couple of times when Clarence Trombley was out, and, um, trying to think who else was out. Um, you must remember back.
I don't think I was paying too much attention to that. I had a monstrous in to take care of at that point. Yeah, and with these crazy wind events that we're getting, I think it's.
Well, and that's the thing is, I mean, right now, we can't expect Randy, Larry, we can expect Steve to, to just actually be around every weekend and night that, I mean, they have lives that they make their commitments in the winter to us. So, he's not wrong. So, um, no, I, I just think that it, it would, it would make, because really, to send a guy out in a storm event as a single is really dangerous, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's, it's, it's actually makes no sense to do that. So if we can't get our actual guys, we've gotta have the ability to, to get another guy, so.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Just make sure we take care of the procedures.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, make an on-call position at an hourly rate according to the union rules.
Yeah, I think we would, probably before we set the rate, would we?
Well, I think we should look at the contract, because at one point in time, we did have an on-call position in the union contract.
Yep.
But I don't remember.
You're funded as same as road crew.
Right.
Yeah.
But I, I don't remember if when we negotiated last time, if that was taken off because we eliminated the paid road commissioner position, because that was a stipulation of the road commissioner stipulation. That when they had the, when, when the previous boards was trying to get the paid road commissioner that was going to be non-union, they then added the on-call position. And I don't remember if that was taken off or not.
I can't remember. I thought it was still on, but.
I thought, I would, I thought it was still on, but I will swear to it.
Yeah. No, but I, I mean, it doesn't hurt just to, I mean, obviously, we gotta look at the contract.
Okay, so I think the motion sounds like to create an on-call position pending review of the union contract and to advertise such.
I'll second it.
Well, I'm not allowed to make it. I'm just.
No, he may.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I thought that's what he had said.
That's what you said, right?
That's what I said. Yeah. I, I, pretty sure I heard him say that, so.
Would you, would you just read that back to us so that we're?
Motion to create an on-call position pending review of union contract and.
To advertise same.
Two weeks.
Is that good?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we need to spend forever.
Motion by Abbott, seconded by Fuller.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, let's talk about the truck.
Steve, you got the truck stuff?
Oh, I got all kinds of truck stuff.
Do you want me to keep this?
Yeah, you hold on to that. And then if you get more, you can just add them to it. So we had a really good winter with the International right to the end. And then it's rear and it's ugly head again as far as issues. Transmission's not working quite right. The motor's acting up. And I've started calling around for pricing on new trucks. I've priced out three tandems and two single axles. One is a six-wheel drive, one is just a rear-wheel drive. My suggestion would be that we go with a tandem axle, not a single, because we're limited on the amount that we can carry, and we're also looking at a smaller resale value in the future. The MAC that I priced is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and twenty-two cents. The Freightliner tandem was a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. The Western Star was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. And then the single axle rear-wheel drive was a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. And the six-by-six was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six. And all of those numbers are subject to change a little bit because, uh, like Randy mentioned today, that we probably ought to add spare tires. You know, get three spares, one front and two drivers, so we've got them on hand. And the addition of backup cameras, but I'm not sure if that would be off of the truck dealer or if that would be off of the body dealer. Because you would also have to have them installed with a body. And the bodies for the tandems, the Viking with an all-angle plow was ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. And the Tenko with an all-angle plow with the same, all the same parts as the other trucks we have is a hundred and eight, or is a hundred thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. But with the Tenko, if we go with that, which I think we should, we would be able to buy the same parts. So we could have, say, a bed chain sitting on the floor of the garage that would fit all three trucks, or different parts that would be interchangeable.
So currently, the Western Stars are all Tenkos?
The Western Stars are Tenkos, yes. And in talking with Casey Lyons from Tenko, he said that they've kept the bed chains the same, the drive brackets, shavs, gearboxes are all the same. And currently, we have a complete setup in the garage. We have a gearbox, both shavs, four sprockets, sitting there waiting to go into a truck because we've had issues this winter that we were able to get around, but in the future, the parts are gonna have to be put in.
It's a lot more sense.
And Tom and I have talked on the trucks a little bit. The Freightliner is a little cheaper, but it has a double frame to it. And it's been Tom's concern that if we hold on to the truck for an extended period of time, being used in the salt, that the frame will start to swell and spread. And for the ten thousand dollar price difference between the two trucks, familiarity, muscle memory, whatever you wanna call it, I think the best approach for us in the garage would be to stay with the Western Star because everything in the cab itself is going to be more accommodating to switching drivers.
So I, I guess, did you total them up? It was a hundred and fifty-six?
One fifty-six, nine oh one for the Western Star.
In, in the hundred and eight. I was trying to put it together, and then I was just trying to look at our equipment fund,
And in, we're talking with Casey Lyons, uh, he said that if we were to vote on buying a truck at this meeting, when I ordered the truck, if I ordered everything through Tenko tomorrow, say, um, all of the parts would be available by time the truck gets here. So they would have everything for this truck at Tenko, ready to put on the truck when it gets there. He thought realistically, I should, if the truck gets there September, I should have it by November. The guy from Viking basically told me if I got it, January, I'd be lucky.
And what was the, the Tenko price was?
It was one hundred thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And that's with the all-angle plow, uh, shelving wing, and then just the standard dump body. I had asked for a price for, uh, a tailgate that could run like a dump truck or swing to the side for hauling stumps, but he hasn't gotten back to me on that price. Because I thought that might be a handy feature if we could swing the tailgate out of the way. Unless you or Tom have had experience with them and don't think they're worth having.
My thought about that, as much as you would actually swing it out, there's a lot of wear on it compared to the amount that you'd actually use it, compared to, you know, if you're at, you know, picking up the stumps, is just pop the two pins out and pick it off. But then there, you lose a chance of losing stuff out the back, too, so.
Right. And we also have the option, we could just change the tailgate up a little bit and just drop the tailgate.
Right, like when we're hauling logs.
Right.
Right.
Where, yeah, it was an idea I had, but I didn't know if that was going to be a, a great idea.
Yeah, the, the barn door ideas. They mount that with, with a body twisting and stuff on it. You know, when you're, when you're dumping up your sand and stuff, I don't know if it would knock it out of whack or not. Cause they are kinda picky about coming back together. If it drops down, you know, as you swing it back, cause of the weight of the gate.
Well, the one that I was thinking of and, uh, I know Doug Davenport has one on his truck, it'll actually swing like a regular dump truck tailgate. Or you can unscrew two bolts, swing them over and then the whole thing swings out of the way. So it wouldn't be like we're, would have to swing it every time.
Or you could bring it all the way around and put it against the side of the box.
You could bring it all the way around, bring it against the side of the box for like dumping stumps, but if you're just hauling gravel, you would leave it closed and bolt it in.
But we don't have a price on that.
But we don't have a price and, you know, I think we can just get away with the regular tailgate and chain it. It was just a thought that it, you know, I had it and wondered if it'd be good, but.
And what kinda money do we have in our equipment fund?
We have a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
One ninety-seven.
So we can buy the truck, just can't get a body for it.
Now, I'm sure you guys probably had a lot of discussion about the six-wheeler. Just not being big enough or, I mean.
Towns I talked to, they wouldn't replace them for the cost. You're talking the six by six?
Yep.
Yeah. You don't get enough drive in that big a truck when you're loaded on your front axles. And they say they don't, they don't, I mean, they're not set up well for them. I don't, I, I think for the money, they're not worth the.
And the price difference between the tandem Western Star and the six by six is like fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, I was surprised that it was that high.
And the other thing on the six by six, uh, Craig Allen, I think it is from ATG, he told me it's like six months to get the axle.
So it's.
So they wouldn't even start, they wouldn't even start putting the truck together till September, so we wouldn't even see it till like April of next year.
Can't do that.
Timeline is important.
Now, it makes sense if you're making a new investment, have it ready to use next month.
Well, I do agree going with the Western Star and keep all three trucks the same and the Tenko, keep the bodies the same. It just makes sense all the way around.
It's that plus that.
Yes. Plus there are two, we've got spare tires that, and a backup camera. And I don't, the, the one other thing Tom was asking about that I don't have a price on yet is the extended warranty, which I think we should have.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I, I think we probably need, we need to know that because that's probably gonna be ten grand.
Probably.
I mean, I, I guess I'd like to have our total, total. And I guess my thoughts on the spare tires, can we just get rims? Why couldn't we just get the rims and tires? I'm, would, I mean, we're not gonna get aluminum spares.
If the steel spares will work, I don't care, we can just get them ourselves. It's just, I think we should have spare tires on hand.
Yeah, and then, um, did you, you probably didn't ask ATG about trading on, because I forgot to bring that up.
When I talked with him to begin with, he asked if we had a trade, I said yes. And when I told him it was the international, he said, well, it's not worth much, but it's worth something. And he hasn't been down to look at it.
It's not worth fifty grand, huh? Well, can we get him down to look at it so we can put this deal together? I mean, we can have a special meeting, so do it.
I'll call him tomorrow and.
And tell him, I mean, we're, I mean, because we definitely, we just need to get these last dollars figured out. What they can give us for the international and.
And what the extended warranty is.
And what the extended warranty is. I mean, other than that, I think we've got everything we need.
I think you've done the right legwork and, and putting packages together. It's just a matter of pulling the trigger, but knowing the exact figures who we gotta shoot at.
Yeah, it's tough to vote on a thing with a twenty thousand dollar variable.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, there's a, if he can, if we can get everything down, I mean, I guess if, I, we don't need a motion, but we can. I'm in favor of the, as you said, and we've discussed over, um, the Western Star with the heavy single, with the Tenko plow and body setup. The extended warranty, we're looking for the pricing on that. I guess I'm not looking for spare tires.
Those are gone.
And, um, if he can give us a trade number and we can have a special meeting and, um, and do the purchase of it, or make the motion to purchase it.
And do you want me to look into the backup cameras?
Yeah, those cameras, I think those are Tenko supplied.
I think so.
Yeah, and that would be part of the package. And I'm thinking that they're like, well, they were fifteen hundred, so. That's, gives you three cameras.
Right.
Your spinner, your body, you can look in your body and you've got your backup camera. They're all, they're all real handy because you don't have to look, see why, if you got sand enough or you wanna dump your body up and then you can see your spinner and then make sure sand's dropping on it.
So I'll call them tomorrow and see what I can come up with.
And get fifty grand for them.
Um, I'm not a miracle worker.
Oh, come on.
Before you leave, can I just double check numbers with you?
Absolutely. So there's one other thing that I have that's not truck. Uh, I'd like to get another chainsaw. Right now, we have, if you count the electric chainsaw, we have three reliable chainsaws. But the two of them are kind of small. And with the bigger trees that we've been doing on Parish Hill, I brought my own saw in a couple of times and I'd like to get a five seventy-two Husqvarna with a twenty-four inch bar. We have a seventy-seven hundred Dolmire right now that has a twenty-inch bar on it and a broken chain break. So we can't use it on the jobs. And I could switch the bar back and forth on the five seventy-two with that bar. And then if we didn't need a bigger bar, we could drop down to the smaller bar for convenience. I've got three prices on that. Uh, one's from GT Power in Rutland. They wanted one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Johnny Stokowski in Mill Granville gave me a price of nine fifty-one ninety-nine. And Charlie White gave me a price of nine fifty-one twenty.
What model is it?
They're all Husqvarna five seventy-two XPs.
I got with a little better. It was Charlie, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
I, 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 I know we talked about it, but I zoned out there when you. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion.
What are we gonna do with that other saw, Steve?
With the Dolmire?
Yeah.
If Charlie can get parts for it, uh, we'll fix the chain break, but it does have a a hot starting issue. So if you cut a tank of gas with it, sometimes that has to sit on the trailer for half an hour before you can run it again. Sometimes it starts right up.
Saw that we got rid of had that same issue. What's going on with our saws with, because?
I'm, I'm guessing that that's a coil issue.
Yeah.
But I know it's been up to Charlie's a couple of times and it's never been fixed.
We got rid of, had the same exact thing is you could run it for a little while and what's causing that, Ken?
I don't know, we haven't had that issue.
Yeah, I've never had that issue either, but.
No. Actually, I can't say that. I had issues with the steel doing that same thing.
Basically vapor locking on it.
Yep. Get rid of it. Solve it.
Fixed it.
Would he give us anything for the Dolmire?
I'll ask him, but I doubt it. I mean, the saw, the, the town has had that saw for, I'm gonna say twelve years now.
Okay, so it's got some age on it.
It's got some age on it.
We, we got one new one. What'd we get, a nine? Fifty, sixty?
Five sixty-two.
Five sixty-two, two years ago. We got rid of, I don't remember, I think that was like a three seventy-two that we got rid of.
I don't know what that one was.
So we have one good saw. And the Dolmire at the time, a couple of years ago, was still in good shape.
I mean, it, it runs good, but you've got that hot starting issue.
Yeah.
And now the chain break's broke to where the chain is always spinning. And it's not good up on those side banks, especially the way we're working on Parish Hill right now. Everything you chip is below you, so you're trying to climb up over those chips to get to the next tree and that stays home. We don't use it anymore.
No. Somebody gets hurt, we'll get home. It's not worth somebody getting hurt. So I will make a motion to get the one from Gerald White. Um, and see if he's interested in the Dolmire and if he'd give us anything for it or not.
Is there a number that you want me to take on it?
No. I'm not going down that road.
It's less than the fifty you gotta get out of our dump truck.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of purchasing the saw? Say aye.
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 Congratulations, you got a new saw. Okay, are we ready to do fleet permits?
Yep, go ahead. Do them all as one.
Okay, yeah, I will entertain, we all gotta sign it.
Yep.
Um, I will entertain a motion to approve fleet permits for AmeriGas, Beacon Sales Acquisition, Camp Precast Concrete, Consolidated Communications, Cota and Cota, Fuller Sand and Gravel, Herman Construction, Hunter Excavating, Transport and Timber Harvesting, HOP Energy, Miles Lumber, doing business as Miles Fuels, Steve Newton, Beacon Sales Acquisition, Wind River Environmental, A. Johnson and Company, and CNR Hauling.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these fleet permits, please say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Um, Ken, do you have any uh, discussion on the transfer station business?
No, actually, I was hoping to talk with more with Jen about it on, she was gonna look into uh, what they were talking about for the townwide stickers. She didn't get that information back to me. Of course, we had met with, uh, with Mark and gone over that information that he had. I don't know what other people's, you know, what their, what your people think about it. To make it simplicity, by going to a town resident sticker. And the information that Jen had gone over with me, we were looking at about a penny and a half on the grand list would cover our dump. Would cover our dump fees. As, um, that would be underlying, uh, zero one dash six oh five. That's currently. I wrote it down here, trying to figure my own hands scratching.
Was it roughly twenty-six?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be somewheres in that twenty thousand dollar range. Trying to, to make it easier out there. I don't know if it was something that would work, we gotta look into it a little bit more. I don't know what you guys are thinking about it.
So the, you said a penny and a half on the grand list.
Right.
Is that a penny and a half more or is that to cover what we are getting in sticker sales?
Be, um, the sale of the stickers um, would be, if we did it for ten dollars per sticker, you would come up with about eight thousand. And a penny and a half on the grand list would make another yeah, something to that effect. So that would cover that actual section in the, in the budget.
My question is, Ken, um, we're running on such a deficit right now that the tax, we're already covering most of the dump here. So you're raising the penny and a half, is that to cover the full sixty thousand or is that just to cover the stickers that are being sold right now?
That would be to to cover, it would cover the amount of money that we are using for stickers. And, and it, and then some. To clarify what's, to make it easier out in the dump area. That's really not gonna help our deficit much. We would have to go up a little more. People are gonna spend.
So the, the penny and a half is just going to cover what we're getting in sales now for the stickers? Okay.
Now, Mark was saying, what? One, three, and six, was it? Is that what I remember? Per bags? I think that's a lot. I mean, we're, we're letting our trash go in there a lot cheaper than that.
Yeah, we're like the lowest in Rutland County.
Right. Spreading it out a little further amongst everybody makes it a little easier. But then we run into a situation where some people pay to have their trash taken away.
Well, and also some people are going to be unhappy because a.
Well, and also some people are going to be unhappy because a single member household doesn't produce the trash that a six-member household produces.
Correct.
So you're basically saying we're not drawing the revenue from the stream that's producing the, the deficit.
Right.
Yeah.
I do think that we need to go, we need to verify that people in town are actually using our dumpster. Rather than.
If we're gonna go to the increase in taxes to cover it, then absolutely.
Right.
I, I, I agree with that. That there has to be a way that we guarantee that they're actually.
Do we feel we still have out of town people using our dumpster?
You know, they're for a fact out of town, like from Pollitt or Timothan, not just they're up here for the weekend running a house?
No, just neighborhood towns that come here for the price. I can pick out the trucks.
Okay.
Which I mean, honestly, if you're gonna get rid of your trash properly, on one hand, okay, but.
Well, I never cared who dumped their trash here.
If, if it was covering the, but if it, if, if it's a.
If it's costing us money, then.
Yeah, we're subsidizing and out. I mean, it's one thing we subsidize people in town, which is fine, but.
Which is why I still like the punch card idea. You buy the punch card, when it's used up, you buy another punch card.
But we still have to deal with pricing.
Anyway, and that makes it fair for the people who are using it and.
Exactly.
Um, yeah, I don't know. I, we're gonna have to come up with a price per bag or bag size. Um, but we still gotta get around the idea of exchanging money out there at the dumpster. I think that's one of the biggest.
Yeah, there's two drawbacks. The outside auditors don't like that method, and the other thing is it takes up more time. And takes the dump attendant's focus off watching what goes into the dumpster while he's busy selling dump stickers. And we all know what happens when something wrong goes into the dumpster, then we get charged for it.
What's our deficit as of right now? For the year?
For the, um, transfer station?
Yeah. Waste disposal. See, we have to take our income on that and subtract it from our, our deficit right now. Our actual is fifty-six thousand.
What page are you on?
Uh, six, or four. So our waste salaries. So we.
So we budgeted the eighty-nine, two hundred, correct?
Yeah.
And we're at fifty-six, four ninety?
So we're at sixty-three percent, which we're basically right on target.
Right.
So, but, I mean, that's still ninety thousand dollars we're budgeting.
Right.
Now, if we look at our, our income end of it. Twenty-one thousand we took in. So we can offset the, um, fifty-six thousand that we're, we're into it for thirty-five thousand right now. So with that projected direction, forty percent more would be another twelve. So we're, we're, right now, we're running a deficit of close to fifty grand in a year. We probably knew that. We've talked about this a million times now. So, yeah, we're trying to come up with a more equitable, equitable way to, um, fund that fifty grand.
Right. We could outfit a truck.
Well, ninety grand's a lot in your budget. That's twice as much almost as our salt budget.
Yeah.
But bringing revenues up by fifty grand from twenty-one, that would mean that we have to go with, you know, hell of an increase. Um, that would be a two-hundred percent increase in, actually, a little more, but in, in costs.
So the dollar a bag goes to three dollars a bag?
Yeah.
For your little kitchen bag. And your typical thirty, thirty-three gallon bag goes to six dollars from two dollars.
And I think that's what Mark was saying. They're up to six dollars for.
At Mount Tabor.
Um, that was.
No, it was Mark Shay. Solid Waste District.
Yeah.
What is Mount Tabor's fees?
Uh, I couldn't tell you.
They have a punch card.
But do they have a bag fee?
That I couldn't tell you.
No, I was just trying to find out, because I might take my garbage there. Cause I have a mount table.
Yep. You could buy that little piece of land that has a link to tax. You could go to Mount Tabor.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the thing is if we do make that increase, we should be able to take, you know, most of our, our budget and, you know, the ninety grand that we're right now putting on the taxpayers as far as everybody, even the ones that aren't using it and, and putting the, um, revenue stream on the people who actually are producing the garbage.
To me, that sounds like the fair way to do it.
I like Ken's idea for the simplicity for out there, but.
Justifying the way it works.
Justifying the way it works is kinda hard.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, it, it would be great if we could just, everybody gets a sticker and not have to worry about money changing hands or Cliffy trying to make change for somebody. The first person comes in with a hundred dollar bill, what's he gonna do? He doesn't have the money out there for it. And the time is a huge thing, too. I, at one point, you, I thought it was you that talked about different color stickers for different pricing.
I don't remember that.
I, I, I mean, we've gotta figure out are we gonna actually raise these prices to that amount? I mean, which it isn't absorbing it.
We really should raise our prices.
And, and then, I mean, we don't have to really overthink the way we, I mean, our, our, our original reason for bringing up was that we were getting low on stickers? Is that why we brought?
Well, we are gonna have to reorder stickers if we decide to stay with that come July first. Um, but we also know that we've had this deficit problem. And we also were under the suggestion of Sullivan and Powers when they did the auditing to not have money changing hands out there.
Yeah, no, I mean, that was.
So you got three things going on.
Yeah, so I don't. And the thing is though, they're all three individual things.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't try to lump them together. I mean, eh, eh, one thing we could do that we probably is we, we've gotta make the decision to make the increase in pricing. That's, that's.
Right.
That's, and then the other stuff is.
And if you have the punch card, you get one punch for a little bag, two punches for a medium bag, and three punches for a construction sized bag. So that.
In my comment on that last meeting when we talked about that was, and is, we're, are we gonna overwhelm Cliff with, you know, thirteen bags? Can you imagine thirteen large bags? Even I would sit there and have trouble trying to, uh, one, two, three, um, one, two, three. I mean, I'm serious. I would lose track, um, halfway through it and throw the punch.
So. Other issue you're going into there is Tom's backed in with his truck unloading ten bags of garbage. Dreah doesn't wanna wait, so she pulls up, grabs her two bags, walks in and throws them in to where Cliffy might not see her go through.
Yeah, and punch, we're, we're back to the same thing is I, I, I mean, we, we're, we're definitely not hiring more attendants because it, that's would be the only way. I mean.
Right.
And Dreah, you have?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments from listening to this conversation multiple times with the simplicity thing. I know you, there's been discussion about the different color stickers for the size bags. Simplicity wise, that's the simplest. And I know there've been comments and discussions about, you know, if we make our prices too high, you know, are we gonna start seeing more garbage on the side of our roads? So if there were a price increase, what if it was incrementally, you know? Where for the next.
Over two week periods.
Or even just over like a three or six month period, cause then there could be an observation of are we seeing more garbage on the road, or are people just like, oh, okay, so now this is this much? Uh, and just if we were to do the sticker thing, you know, would they only be able to be purchased at from the town clerk's office? You can get it all in colors or?
Yeah, I think that's the last, why we went through the same stuff. And last time we called it a night and went home.
And then my only other segue of that is if that is available, then having one day a week that the town clerk's office is open past three o'clock. So then people don't have the excuse of, well, I work until X amount of time, so I can't get there to get my stickers, so I need to pay for them all. But I know that opens up a whole other bag worms.
Yeah, well, or what about? Or what about, um, doing something on our website? We order them online?
I don't think our website's way of advance. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not quite sure if, if we've got the ability to interact on our website.
I don't know. It just opens up like.
No, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good ideas here. And I, and we could, you know, get to the, um, I think you're right. I mean. Well, let's take everything, you know, to break it down. We're all in agreement that we're gonna raise prices. And then I'm under the feelings that punch cards are not gonna work with multiple, lots of bags that I mean, Cliff, I, I wouldn't blame him if he took his little punch thing and threw it after you're trying to count how many punches you do in a day. So stickers would be our only option. Colored stickers would probably be the easiest option because yellow and red is, were we going with three sizes or two sizes?
Three.
Three. Um, yeah, I mean, we could, we could go with the three size stickers.
And I think that we should maybe do a little quick research on surrounding towns on their cost per bags. And what Pollitt's getting or what Mount Tabor's getting or Wallingford is.
I know we've done these in the past and I guess we could update that for refreshers for putting these things together, cause you know, it's they might've all raised theirs in the last
Right.
six months, too. So are, we're kind of, in, in, and I, I, I'm, do we wanna rehash talking about sticker colors? I mean, are we good with saying that we're gonna pick three colors?
Pick three and go.
And, and, and go. Did you fall asleep on this conversation?
Yeah, three colors and go. It's fine with me.
No, I'm, I'm just saying so we can move forward with this.
Three colors.
And, and our other thing is we've gotta come up with a, a number on, on actual. I don't know about implementing it in phases, if that's gonna help, or if we just maybe.
I think that's gonna generate complaints. People are gonna say you just raised the price.
Yeah. But I'm not sure if we've got a, we could call it incremental, but we don't need to slay the dragon in one move. We can kinda offset our budget by, you know, a hundred percent. And then that would definitely show some significant, um, you know, increase in revenues from that. Then, so if we raise that just by a hundred percent, and so we'll basically double it. The three sticker thing, what was the last item that we were struggling with here?
How you get stickers?
How we get stickers. Thank you. That's how, I'm going to sleep with Steve here. Our website.
And people purchase them by sending in a check, get them mailed to them if they can't get there?
The only problem with that, that is I've had stuff mailed in Danby to Danby take.
I know.
We, we had ballots showing up recently.
Oh geez. Yeah, cause it all, it's all gotta go to White River.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the, the only thing is, I, I mean, that's the logical way to do it. But I, I mean, how would you like it if you mailed in your check because you worked and you said, or not, I'm not saying you don't, but I'm saying you just got home at night, wrote the check, dropped in the mailbox, and, you know, four months later, you're still waiting for your stickers.
Well, I don't know how the businesses would feel about it, but maybe businesses would, um, help us out and you could buy stickers at certain businesses?
No, I, I mean, we, we've gotta look for an area that we can make it easy and accommodating to to, to get these stickers.
My only other question, would the sticker be a plain sticker, or would it say something?
Well, it would have to say something.
It's town of Danby, huh?
Yeah. Do we use serial numbers in our stickers? So we don't keep track of them that way?
Biggest drawback we've got is being able to get people to availability to purchase the stickers.
Right.
Can we do it by check only? Out at the transfer station?
That's an idea, or we could ask our treasurer. At one time, she had Saturday hours.
The only thing that I could say wrong about the checks is most people are using debit cards.
Yeah, using credit cards now. Do we take credit cards here?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, we do not.
I mean, would it be outlandish to consider, could the town have like a Venmo account, or? I know a lot of people do their, I'm just saying, a lot of people do the Cash App stuff, so if they didn't have a check and if she did have ours, then they could just, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking.
Just another can of worms.
I mean, if it's going right directly to Jen, it doesn't matter if it's cash or check.
Right.
Do we have any comments from people at home?
I don't see many.
You're open for somebody to give us a good answer.
They've all nodded off.
Yeah, um, well, we weren't gonna make an actual motion on any of this, we were gonna agenda for next, but I think we've accomplished, two of our tasks is, we're, we're set on the doubling of the price and the and the three-sticker thing instead of the punch cards. Um, and then the only thing we really need to do is make stickers easily available.
Right.
And we should be able to.
I'm just thinking about, um, people, if you did have a person who was gonna collect money at the, right here at the dump, um, if you just did that like first Saturday of the month, that if you can't get here to get your stickers, that first Saturday of the month, you could buy them here. And then, you know.
Get all in.
Then a person doesn't have to be there every single.
In theory, it sounds good, but it's just amazing how people get in these last-minute jams and.
Do we know?
Yeah, but were, were you talking about having Jen be there every Saturday?
Hmm.
No, but Steve was thinking she had Saturday hours.
Well, Brad.
I mentioned that she used to have Saturday hours, and then she went to Monday and Wednesday.
Right now, do we know how much Cliffy connect collects and how much they buy at the?
I'd rather not say.
Most of it.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so, right now, we know the way the technique everybody's doing it is
hang as.
As, as you go.
When we show up, yeah.
Yeah. So we know that works. Yeah, I don't know, instead of sit here and, um, look at each other.
Yep.
With some of us.
Cash only, locked box, exact amount.
Well, I, I make the suggestion we table this till the next meeting. Maybe by then, we can, I mean, we've, we've accomplished two out of three of the
Sure.
things, and I think that maybe in discussions with other people and throughout the month, we can come up with something.
Yeah, and it was helpful listening to Mark the other day, Mark Shay.
Yeah.
Um, is there a second to table yet?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of table until next month? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And it doesn't sound like we're all alone either, it sounds like a lot of towns are in the same problems.
All the same boat. Uh, any old business? Any new business? Any motions to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
All righty. Is there a second?
Second, Ben.
Anybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourns.